Here we go.
Hello, is this... You hear someone just... That's not... That's so good signature? A secondary signature?
Yep. Yeah, I can do it.
You want to do it?
I'll just do the one that's missing. Give me the one on top.
Spending taxpayer money.
I really don't want to.
Yeah.
Hey, was there a letter from, uh... I think that's hot, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
Was there a letter from, uh... Dave Martin?
Uh... Oh, that was in, uh... Tom opened a company that constructs the tree, that tree.
Oh, I don't know. I just saw that it was on the agenda.
Yeah, quality and whether we should get an email there. I think it was from Stu Sue. So, um... They wish to get an email there. I think it was from Stu Sue. So, um... It's, um... I think it was the second.
Okay, I haven't seen those stack yet.
It was two days ago, I think it was.
Okay. Because Donna was...
Yeah, it's supposed to be kind of just an email.
Donna and Dave want to spend all this money here.
Hello.
Again.
Um, Keisha. Yes? We would like to present, um... The application from Newmarket for the memorial. She won, when you talk about sorry. They're here, so... Are we going to discuss it?
Yeah, we're gonna be talking about this. Um, do you want copies of this?
Would you?
Yeah.
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Old D. Oh, you're good. Okay, all right.
Good thanks. How are you? Hi!
What's the thing I should run? I don't know if you have your clock moving on. Just take one for now.
Well, that's fine. It's definitely, it's definitely, it's definitely my camera. Open the rest of the room.
There you go. No, I can't. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, seven o'clock. We'll call a meeting for maintenance work. All right, first up on the agenda, uh... Water and sewer. So, um... I assume this is in reference to the purchase and sale?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Pretty much assigned.
No questions asked?
First, oh, but first, I'd like to show you a couple of things we had.
Sure.
I don't know if you were aware of it or not. There's an easement on the property. Officially. For water and sewer lines down around the back and then... That's what we have.
So, it's a 20-foot wide easement?
Yeah.
For land maintaining, repairing, using a sewer line? Okay.
I don't know if you were aware of it or not.
No. Oh, right through the back lot?
Yeah. Connects, this house over here connects to the sewer line. This house connects to the sewer line. They can run down across here, down the main block.
Okay, so interconnect here, interconnect here. Got it. Okay. Well, you guys manage these things, don't you? So, if this is Main Street, in the middle of it, these are, is this 20-foot wide section?
This is the way it was proposed to change it because, because that's what they're gonna have to do. It's gonna be created.
So, they move this?
They move down behind the sign. Yes.
And so, it's, this, this branch is collecting here and then running back?
Right, this is down the... Some of the street, yeah.
But does it go here or does it just run down the street now?
No, it goes down the street.
So, then?
Post office. This house connects to, it's across.
And then run? Okay. Okay, great. Do you got, do you have, I assume you have a proper easement since it's really for... Sewer lines?
So, would you like to sign it? Can you sign it?
Okay. This is a formal copy?
That's the copy that you sent to me.
Okay. Um, before we sign, uh, any other additional questions, concerns, discussions? No? You guys are all set? So, what we'll do is we'll sign the purchase and sale. I'll talk to Derek Durbin. He'll basically work towards the closing documents, whatever, you know, obviously formal legal documents, the de-transfer and everything else. So, I would assume that would take, might take a couple of weeks. But my assumption is that for a month or two, we can have the transaction consummated. Okay?
I think it could be in the room, but it's very cool. I'd like to...
I'd like to. I'll, I'll tell Derek, I'm sure they could. This is not a very hard, uh, purchase and sale for them to make. Yeah, no. And there's no bank involved or anything like that, so they should be fairly even when we close. So...
We need to initial the bond. Full seller.
Uh, this is just a purchase and sale, so I don't think it's... Oh! If it has it there, then do it. Great. Yeah, that's your reason, and you have the other one. That's your comment. You guys assign those and get us the original back?
No, keep the, the sign, yeah, the sign.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. All right. We'll let Derek know with the goal of four July 1. Correct?
That's where you would like the opposite.
Yep.
Beginning of the quarter. On the other.
End of the year, yeah. All right. All right. While you do that, do you mind if I move forward, Rick?
Congratulations.
Do you mind if I move forward while you do this? Great. Uh, next up, uh, discussion about, I'm gonna, this is, uh, the bench policy and who was here last time. So, um, after the last meeting, as we, uh, as you had indicated, we reached out to Newmarket about the policy that you had indicated. And, um, what they have in place is basically requires an application. Um, and they charge a very large fee, actually. Um, I'm not sure that, uh, we will do something similar, similar to this. But, um, given the concerns of the discussion last time, um, I would, I would be inclined, and all the other board members weigh in. I would be inclined to require an application, um, for somebody asking to put a bench on town property. Um, that application would be one that is going, in my, again, my opinion, is, is open for, for discussion. Um, certainly if you're going to do a mortgage bench, an indication as to, um, who it's in the name of, what they've done as a town officer or on a commission here in town. Um, in other words, a justification for... Uh, allowing that bench to take place on public property. This would help us, I think, us and future boards, um, get around the problem of leaving it open for anybody in every room. So, um, what I think what we would like to do is that based on this is come up with an application and require, uh, anybody who is doing that to submit the application and to get a vote and approval of the board before that can be done. I don't know if you guys have other ideas, concepts, questions, comments about, about this?
No, I agree, and I think it will help mitigate, you know, the issue that you have where you purchase events when you're ready to install it, but you don't have the permission yet or you don't know that it's a possibility. So, being able to have an application and then submit it, I think, makes most sense and is most fair for the townspeople.
No, I see that. But, you know, children understand it. So, this is, if I took my application in tomorrow, or the longer I keep, um, well, can I mention, if it's approved, can I mention install the memorial today?
Um, I would assume that the answer is yes.
Cause I know Michael's holding it, and you said that he could get it installed as soon as I had authorization.
No, understood. And again, this is something new for us. Portable process in place. It's always, never goes as fast as you want. Um, but my assumption is that we'll come up with a, uh, over the next 24 hours, we'll come up with some form of an application. That'll allow you to make an application and then, um, we may have to operate outside of meeting, but we're gonna have to make it as part of the public record for the next meeting, um, just to make a quick decision on that.
And Keisha, give the colonies, put the applications. And then if you tell me what the fee is, you'll have to tell me whether the money is donated to the town.
Yeah, it would be, it would go to the town.
To the town, except, would you like that in hands or would you donate it to them? You know, the police fund thing?
No, but, I mean, for the most part, this would, any fee that we come up with would probably be a fee that would go as a representation of long-term care or maintenance, cause it's going on public property. And so, it's going to offset that. Now, you know, it's a bench, I'm not sure how much maintenance there will be. But, uh, I think that the fee, most importantly, would go towards grounds, grounds maintenance here in town.
I'll take care of that as soon as we call the town about the fees. And, um, I'll give you the full body as soon as it's available.
Okay.
So, if, if there's a fee involved and we end up putting it into maintenance, who typically maintains the memorial bench? Is the owner?
Yeah, well, the owner, I mean, I'm sure the owners would, would come down and do whatever maintenance they want, but it would mainly be for in and around town land, you know, if it's going to the landing, um, whatever maintenance is being done down there, right? If, again, not knowing what the bench looks like, but, you know, if there's like a, a brick underlayment and the bricks are upset, we'd probably have our grounds people who wanna fix that. So, it, I don't expect the fee to be substantial, but, you know, it's, it'll, it'll be, it'll be a nominal fee especially for something like this. Now, I, and beyond the town landing, though, I think that one of the things that, and, and that got raised about this was, um, there are other areas in the town that may be worthwhile for people to consider putting benches on if they wanted to do memorial. One is the conservation land, um, down off of the field that the town owns, that, um, I think the sellers would love for people to use more often. And so, there are a variety of options that we can consider in and around the town in terms of, of the public property. So, that'll all be included in the application, um, but hopefully, um, that'll, that'll help at least address this immediate issue.
And did you get reassurance from Michael that, um, it would be professionally installed? It's not tip over. Not polished granite, it's not rough granite, it's all polished. And so, it should be really, really maintenance to it, but you said it all these, in the form, and concreted and so on and so forth. So, I think for safety purposes or reliability, the bench should stay in place.
Okay.
And, um, and on the same page, though, I would all, when you talk about the Hilton Field, I know that when you do your events in town, like the memorial days, you have a barbecue down there and stuff. Maybe sometime I could be contacted to think about maybe getting a fundraiser for the Zeebo down there. It made it look like it's a place.
Well, the field itself is not owned by the town. The woods between the field and the river is the conservation land that is now owned by the town. The field is still owned by the descendants of the seller's family. So, not that it's, it's not a bad idea, but, um, that would, that would have to be an issue that I just... Yeah, the, the field itself is still, still owned by the seller. Yeah.
All right, well, that's my question.
All right.
All right, now, what do you think of my application?
Uh, try to turn it around very quickly. All right, thank you, Jeff. All right, um... You all set?
All set.
Excellent, thank you. I'll get this over to Derek. Thank you. Uh, next up on the agenda, locality equipment purchase program grant. Mr. Keenster.
So, Phil has to take off, maybe we'll turn around and we'll be back in a second. This is a grant that the government office has put together. And it's really for equipment related to, uh, the pandemic that we can actually get. Basically, we have to come up with 10% of the cost, something $50,000. But we, you know, we had a meeting a few weeks ago, uh, we talked about something that we could probably use. And we came up with a couple, uh, signboards, portable signboards that we can put out, that would message folks.
For on the streets?
On the streets, right. They point a little bit, maybe tow behind, maybe pull behind a cruiser, rescue one of the trucks.
Those big, like, orange ones?
They're huge, they're small, you've seen Exers. Exers have a small one, like, you can go past it, it's all they always have, it's for a water man pushing it. It's a, it's a small signboard, um, you know, so those, we thought about getting two of those. Uh, the other thing were a couple of smart displays, one for here at the town hall and one for the fire station. I think the smart displays would be great in different meetings. They come with a built-in camera, uh, you can, you can put plants up, it's a 75-inch, uh, high-depth screen. And basically, you can draw on it, you can...
Is it moldy?
It's moldy, so you can mold it around it.
Great.
And I put a wireless connection on these. Uh, and then the, the two other things were the AEDs, uh, one for here in the town hall, because we don't have an AED in the town hall. And one for the police cruiser. And then a TV for the police station, a 50-inch TV that they can, you know, they can, they can broadcast, uh, display scheduling events, info, portable, etc.
Is that for inside?
That'd be for inside, yes.
Okay, so we, we would be required to come up with a $4,824 match if, if we approve that?
Correct, and we have, we have the money in the budget, in our budget already, so...
Oh, okay.
It's really, so this money, we're probably gonna pull this out of Seabrook grant money we get every year.
Jeff, what?
I'm sorry. We, we probably pull this money out of Seabrook grant money that we get every year, uh, a little over $1,000 every year from Seabrook. For being one of the 17 communities on Seabrook, uh, provided we're in the area, we're in the area. It's actually pretty good for the town, so it's really, it's not gonna cost the town anything.
And then Seabrook money can really be only used for public safety type assets?
Yeah, we also have money in our merch, in our merch and gift fund as well, if you do, we have to, okay? But we're gonna have to, oh, $4,000 or $5,000. Do you guys have anything else? Cause we have to, we can spend up to $50,000, um, so if there's some insular stuff you guys need, uh, I know we talked about it in seminars and the radios, those tend to go, our radio's a few years old now, uh, you know, we can maybe get some more batteries. Those were pretty expensive, they're like $200 a piece. And we've got, we've probably got 25 radios, so that's something we could, if we needed to. But I don't know, we've got, we've got a lot of you guys to say, does anyone, you guys need, you know, you could use?
Was, did you guys make this list with Phil and Ken?
Yes, yeah, Wayne and myself, Jeff Box and Sheen.
Tom?
Tom, yes, exactly, Tom Connor. So, we tried to come up with, you know, just, and the signboards were kind of a, a nice type of signboards. Cause they know, we rented them in the past, and to have them here in town would be nice.
Where would you store them?
Uh, well, we actually got, uh, different water farms got a slot for probably put them...
Underneath.
Yeah, doesn't belong to us, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
What, what are our chances of, of receiving these?
I, I think it's very good.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's very good.
And this is separate from the other donor funds?
Yes, yes, this is...
Hold this program.
Yeah, there's a lot of money I have to pour around right now, but if we don't take it, somebody else is gonna take it, so...
Other questions? Uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, have Jeff apply for the LAPP. Uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, have Jeff apply for the LAPP grant that the state for the equipment is online.
I'll second that.
Second, I'll favor. Aye.
Can I ask, sorry, I was just looking at this again, and it says to obtain the maximum $50,000 award, but we're not, you're not trying to go for the maximum.
Well, we could, we wanted to, you know.
We're, we're close.
Yeah, it's, it's a little stuff, like, you know, we, we wondered if you guys got, you know, if you had something you wanted, you know, I mean, speak up, because we'll certainly find, you know, we can find that extra, you know, $1,800 or whatever.
$1,754.
Yeah, right.
Well, it says the total cost of at least $55,000, $556, to get the full amount of $50,000. That's why I was asking.
Oh, yes, exactly, yes, you're right.
So if, if we're going to take the full amount, then we have to spend another $7,000 from here.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to, but you know, we, the money's there.
If we, if we can, I guess.
Yeah, we can do something, yeah.
So if we've got about.
$35,000 right now, I think, you know, $20,000 would be good, we could always get something else. You know, if somebody needed a new computer or something, we could probably get that for them.
Okay.
I think it would make sense if the money's here to purchase the.
Oh, no, if they can identify anything else, oh, I'm all for it.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll take the full amount, I mean, it's, it's not an issue. We just have to decide what we're gonna do, so we'll have one more power to appeal.
Sure.
That says due June 3rd.
Yes, we have, we have to do that, yeah.
Well, I'll amend my motion then to say up to the $50,000 for the equipment listed in anything else that you can identify before the application.
It would actually be $55,000.
Well, that might be worth.
It would be $50,000 of identified plus our 10% match, correct?
Right.
It says the, the eligible equipment has a total cost of at least $55,000, $556, to get the $50,000. So we would have to have that much if we want the full amount, yeah.
And Bill, you should hear that, usually.
Very cool.
That's asking you, Phil, there's.
There's a question on $55,000, Bill, on the $55,000, $556, that's the max, and we, that includes our.
Correct, yeah. So then, most of the grant award is $50,000, you know, so additional, plus on top of that, so. Okay.
But we have, we have to purchase $55,000 worth of equipment.
If we completely max out the grant for it.
Yes, yes.
Right, so we just talked about batteries, maybe some batteries, um, you know, so we can have a more meeting. I'm sure we can figure something else out.
Sure.
We have a meeting on the 31st, so if that's, you know, if you mean us, that's what it's gonna be.
Well, I, I, again, I, I, the motion I'm making is to approve this up to the full amount of the award, assuming this is, if any equipment is quoted above this.
Well, that's what.
That would exempt the flexibility to identify it, and then they could just notify us what, what else.
We, one of the other things we had talked about briefly was upgrading our lighting unit, our lighting unit. We've had that for a little over 10 years, uses the big sodium K light bulbs. And we could, we could upgrade that to LED lighting if we needed to. But the problem is Jeff looked into it, the chief looked into it, uh, and with $7,500 upgrade, we only paid $10,000 for the LED lighting unit, so we said we'd be all on hold on that. We think we might get a less expensive way to do that, so if we have to do that, we'll probably just get that out of our, we can, we can use our money.
Well, you have $7,500 back there.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, but we just hate to spend $7,500.
No, understood, yep.
$10,000.
Yep.
My concern with your motion, I don't know if that, if by saying that they can spend up to $50,000, that limits them, because they actually need to spend $55,000.
Oh, no, no, up to, up to the maximum amount, amount of the grant. In other words.
Just $50,000.
Well, no, it would be the $55,000, $556, is what they're indicating is. If, if they cannot identify anything up to the $55,000, $56,000, which would then equate to our match of 10% of that, correct?
Right.
Yes.
So it would be, you know, $5,556, which will come out of the Seabrook money.
I just wanna make sure the, the fervor is, is clear.
Okay.
Correct.
Well, I'll, I'll make that motion for approving the equipment listed here and anything else that you're identifying to inform us of before you apply for the grant, up to the maximum amount to be, the, I'm sorry, the 10% being supplied from the Seabrook fund.
Okay, second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How you doing?
Thank you. Bill, why would you?
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to the issue that got raised today.
Yep.
Um, that way if you need to get out of your, your. So, um, you guys heard of this email earlier today, uh, from a resident on Quinn Fort? About, oh, okay, so there is a, there's a, there's an issue about, uh, between neighbors down at Quinn Fort. One neighbor is saying that a light is shining into their house from another neighbor.
Do you want me to just give them while you?
Uh, this is actually an email itself, I, I don't have to email itself, this is more along the lines of ordinance. Do you have the email?
Yes.
Oh, so there you go. So, um, there is a, an issue of, basically a neighborly issue. Apparently, I think Chief Young indicated that it had been raised several years ago?
The, the last time we got a call was about two years ago, just short of two years ago. And again, it's, it's a resident on Hervey and resident on Quinn. You know, some ongoing issues between these two neighbors over the years. I reached out to the resident that sent the email earlier.
Okay.
Just to kind of get a foundation of what's been going on. Sounds like nothing recently has, um, occurred, but this little ongoing issue of a light. They explained that there's no town ordinance necessarily that covers, I think, you know, that would apply to her concern. Uh, I did say, I typed up a report for it, I said, I pulled her out, reached out to the building inspector to see if there was some sort of building code that would apply, um, there, you know, to get back to her, so.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, based on that, I mean, I had reached out to, to the chief and asked him about, is there an ordinance on this?
Correct.
He had indicated that there are disorderly conduct and harassment ordinances, but you guys are gonna have to take a look and see if any of those apply.
Yeah, and on its face, I don't think it would.
Great.
Um, you know, from where, from what I'm hearing so far. But again, I'll reach out to the building inspector, see if any, if there's, find some sort of resolution that way, so.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, next item, town oil bid. Do we have that? I didn't see anything on the town oil sales.
No, it was, um, it's listed, it was $28.2.
So, um, yeah, um, thank you, that reminds me. So, um, our contract for heating oil supply is PUP. Uh, we're now basically on a month, month, uh, just a monthly, I believe. Um, we need to put it out to bid. Uh, anything like this, though, needs obviously the approval for, from the board to go out to bid. So it's, I'll make a motion that we put the town heating oil contract up to bid, to rebid for heating oil supply to the upcoming year. Actually, did we do three years? Was it a three-year contract for four?
So it says October 21st and April 22nd.
Okay, okay.
So that's six months?
Uh, yeah, basically the winter season, winter season, when we need it.
Or are you saying that you contract for three winter seasons, is that what you're saying?
I wasn't sure if we did three winter seasons or what.
This is the first time we used that one.
What's that?
I think it was fairly new that we had this, this last.
I think, I think it's just one, what we.
Yeah, sure, yeah, October 21st, April 30th, April 22nd.
So it'll be one, one year.
But is that what we want to do, is to do it for one year, do we? I'm just wondering.
I'm not sure if we'll get a quote for three years. Uh, maybe, um, maybe we can have them ask for a one-year and a three-year quote, and we'll see what we get.
The concern is volatility of the markets.
Absolutely.
And, and, since once we get locked in and things go back out, then we're stuck.
It's, it's a risk. Well, and, and last time, when we went out for bid, um, we were provided both a fixed rate and a variable rate from the suppliers.
Yeah.
And we, we, yeah, exactly.
They can't predict anyway.
Exactly, nor, I don't think, and busting, because if we could, we probably wouldn't be here, we'd be on the beach somewhere. So usually the bids come in with, you can choose, uh, you know, a higher fixed rate or a lower variable rate, you take the risk. Um, and last year, I believe, we took the fixed, fixed rate, if I remember correctly.
They come in with free trade option?
Uh, typically they do, yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion that we, we put.
Your question?
Yeah? You guys wanna join in?
If, if you would, if you want, yeah.
Um, I don't see, it, it probably provided an economy of scale, so it'd probably be better for both of us. Um, I'll make a motion that we put out to bid both for the town, which includes, I think, this and the fire department, uh, building, and, uh, will include the water district as well. Oh, and the library, yeah, and the library, thank you.
I'll second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, great. So we'll see what those come back, make a decision at that point. Uh, next item, board cell phones. Is that you? I don't, Chief is dealing with this, right?
He was.
Did he get on the account?
He did.
Oh, great, okay. So I think Chief might have, I think, reached out to you guys about the board's cell phones, so. Um, I think the issue is, I think we all pretty much use our personal phones. Um, so do you have yours? I don't have mine with me, but, um, are you guys all set to have those turned in and?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Um, obviously you just need the approval, uh, there is a payoff, uh, for the previous contracts. Uh, that number was $558.54. Since then, we've been moving payments, so that number is going to be a little bit lower. However, we're paying $322.74 a month, so please, you know.
Right, he was, he must have left this contract, okay. Um, I'll make a motion that, um, we, uh, authorize, uh, Chief Young to turn in the board's cell phones and say they're not really being used.
It's six cell phones in total.
Oh, who's the other, great?
Three board, uh, phones, there is one police department phone, and there's two fire department phones.
And they never use them, they never use them. Okay.
I'll second.
Second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, we'll just drop those off to, to, at the station.
Sure.
You can probably take Jackie's off, her own as well. All right, next up, trustees of the trust fund. No trustees here? Okay, this issue was raised, um, came to my attention, um, that the, there is a trust fund called the I-Agreed Temperance Fund, which was established back in 1964, under the condition that the town agreed to in writing with the trust, um, add a, a course or some instruction on, let me get the wording right. Uh, here we go. Town agreement so forth with bond and death entrants were written undertaken with my trustee that a course in temperance will be taught in the town's school system. Um, this has been a trust fund since 1964, and, um, there was a concern about whether the trust fund was being spent down entirely, and given the terms and conditions of the trust, whether, um, whether it was being spent the way that the trustee wanted. I guess we'll put this off until another meeting, because I think we need to have a conversation with the, with the trustees. All right, uh, quality hardwood correspondence, uh, that would be the email. So, uh, Lori Martin has indicated that there's some dying trees that need to be taken down. One in the middle of Badger Park, um, and one near the Aaron's old house. And, uh, um, she wants, uh, to get a quote to do that, as well as clean up the area and remove the plant. Uh, she's referring to the old fence area over here, I believe, on the right? On, on the right-hand side. So I think, uh, she's looking for authorization to go get a quote for that work. I'll make it.
Is this, I mean, with taking out trees, is this something that needs to go to bid? Will it be more than $5,000, or is that?
I, I think she wants to go get a quote, and then we can try and figure out, you know, whether we can get issues in the, in the budget of the, of the ground, so. I, I would encourage her to get a quote, I mean, you can't hurt to do that, unless you guys have any questions or concerns. All right, we'll, uh, we'll have Lori go with you then.
Will she give us, like, current services to get her quote, or will she reach out to other services to get a quote?
Um, it looks like she intends to give us a quote. As for the, the trees, I think she's gonna have to get a, a quote for that. Usually that's from a, you know, a tree professional, as opposed to a landscape person. We'll see though, when the book comes in.
So she's giving us two, she's gonna give us a quote?
Yeah, I want the quotes not only for the trees, but also for the cleanup here, yeah. Circuit court correspondence, okay, so, um, this has to do with the, a State of Elaine Williams, it should be in your package.
Sorry, did we, did we make a motion?
I didn't make a motion, I was just throwing it by, 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 I don't think so, it was just to get, get a quote. Estate of Elaine Williams, you should have a copy there, um, just as, um, background. Um, so, uh, Elaine Williams, um, lived on Dixon Ave. Uh, years ago, um, the family, uh, was in a situation that appealed to the town to, uh, come up with a plan to, uh, pay off their back taxes, which the town agreed to do. But this is an indication, um, that, uh, that, um, Robinson, Robin, Rob Ellison is now the trustee of her estate. This is just informative for us, um, there's no action that needs to be taken from us, but it is just, um, noting that as correspondence to the town. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. I have, uh, an issue came up with the auditor, actually today, this morning, um, and then, um, this is a, a delegation of deposit authority. Um, this is basically our treasurer giving, su, uh, asking the board to approve that Sue McKinnon be allowed to make deposits to our accounts. Um, has to be redone every time we have a, a new treasurer. So I'll make a, a motion to, um, sign a delegation of deposit authority allowing our tax collector to make deposits.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sign that one? Uh, are we prior meeting minutes as well as revenues and expenses?
I'll make a motion to accept as written.
Motion to accept the, uh, Tuesday, April 26th minutes as written, from Jackie.
I'll second.
Second by Hobie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, along those lines, just real quick, um, do you wanna talk about 399 discapsic?
Yes, sir. So, um, I talked to Bobby about that, and he drafted a letter and threw it out from somewhere, and let it take a gander at it, and. And, uh, Chris, who's the young fellow that loses pit bull out there when he goes to work because it would destroy his apartment. I made three attempts to contact him with no response, it doesn't even go voicemail, just says it's not available.
Mm-hmm.
So, I've had no success, I've been making a local, uh, Chief talked to him back on twenty-eighth December, when they thought the dog was abandoned in there. Uh, so, it's a letter that Bobby has drafted, and I just told him I'm running by you guys before, see what the guidance works in the board before he set it out, and it may, it may or may not do anything, but, you know, you run it by, and see for what.
Sure.
Maybe you don't have to be specific, you won't, but try and resolve that issue without having to wait. And do we need to give the neighbors a minute to, I'm over it, one of us?
Um, I, I, well, let's, Bill, you have any questions or concerns about the land?
Um, well, is this, are we going to take these separately from the taxes that are in the areas?
Well, um, the tax, the tax item will continue to move forward, that's under state statute in terms of when we issue our taxing, and then after that, I think just thirty days after that, whether we can take the property or not. So, that will continue outside of, of intent, and any attempt in the near term, uh, because it'll, it'll still be six, eight weeks before we could even get a hold of the property. So, um, you know, I, I certainly think something like this makes sense, of, and coming from Bobby as well.
Running concurrently, just trying to maybe mitigate the problem, solve the problem without having to...
Yep, exactly.
With the neighbors, so...
Yeah, yeah, try to minimize it up until the point in time when the tax issue resolves itself or not.
So, we good to go, we've got the Bobby and a little some of the, what, Jackie, good?
You good? Okay, great.
I'll kind of with Bobby, and then Jackie, let's...
Um, and just, um, uh, in a related matter with respect to Hazel, Derek had indicated that the, he may have already filed, he was here before early this week filing in the court, with the court the final, um, uh, request for the town to, uh, collect this, uh, money owed under Hazel. Um, he's had several discussions with Hazel's council, former council, um, hasn't been able to resolve anything, so Derek's moving forward through the court. He expects that that will take a few weeks, at which point in time, if, um, there hasn't been any, uh, payment from Hazel, uh, he expects that, um, the town will get, um, the court, uh, to approve, um, what will most likely be a sheriff's auction of the property. So, I expect that that issue be resolved over the next, well, probably on the same timeframe, really, um, as, as the, the discasse forms sometime over the next couple of months.
Has there been a history of him making payments of the last minute?
Uh, yes, but this is much larger than any, um, history of payment because of not only, uh, the, the, um, money the town spent to clean up the property under the court order, um, but also the fees associated with, um, noncompliance with the town ordinances. So, I, and, and given the conversations that Derek has relayed from his council, it doesn't sound like, um, that he's necessarily in before time. We could be surprised, and, and we'll know in, in the near term.
Well, does he have to pay, you'd have to pay the full judgment, though, in order to get, to stop that process of...
Correct, or, or either that, or come in and basically come to an agreement with us that you say, okay, you complied in court. Okay? All right, uh, we have a revenue and expenditure report for equal. It took the revenues?
Yeah, they did. Two-thirds of the...
You have to get a catch-in.
I said, what's going on with the motor vehicle permit fees, two-thirds of what was, um, or one-third of what changes?
What, what line is that?
The revenue is thirty-two, two-hundred.
Oh, yeah, thirty-two, two-hundred. Uh, okay, so, um, we've collected a hundred and fifty out of the four-hundred and sixty expected. All right, we're only a third of the year through, so, yeah, so we're, we're about on budget for that. Any other questions on revenues and expense? Uh, one thing I'll, uh, one last thing we're gonna mention is, um, and we had talked about it before, uh, the curbside, um, waste collection. Um, I'm gonna go through the last hour of pain and come up with a draft, and I'll circulate to you guys, um, so we can take a look at that and start, start working on that, um, I'll have that for the next meeting.
When is that contract up?
End of this year.
End of the year.
Yeah, end of this year. Um, but that's the one thing that, um, occurred to me today, well, I'll have to go through things that we need to, uh, work on.
Is there anything we need to address with the, um, oh, sorry, let's...
I don't have any, we're on open arms now, unless you have...
Do we need to...
A vote on it? No, no, that's just informal.
Um, do we need to do anything with the, you know, about the lighting?
Oh, that, that...
Uh, good question, I haven't, I haven't thought about that, Jackie.
Is that a building inspector issue, is it a health officer issue?
I think, I...
She heard Bobby, right?
Was that she had?
She heard Bobby, um, yeah, we should probably talk to the building inspector and see if, if he has any rule in that. Um, I'm not sure what he is, off the top of my head, um, with respect to that. Do you want to reach out to Larry, have a conversation with him about that, that'd be great. That'd be great. All right, any other issues? You guys all set?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, look forward to closing with you guys this afternoon. Do you need to adjourn? Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second from Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you, guys. Who are we three of, collecting?
I don't want to be having to worry.
I know, that's...
What a relief, sitting in a door, yes.
Well, see, that is, like, the blue car, once, this is the desk, it's, it's open-ended.
Glad you guys found that money, that's great.
Yeah, so, why, I'm off now.
That is hard.
Not just, they, they, the full leases hang on to that, I'll let Derek, uh, let me, we are set up on that, and, um, have them, have them close. All right, I'll be ready.
Thank you, too.
Thank you. Hey, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good.
Are you with your wife's, uh...
My wife's phone number?
Uh, she wanted to...
Yo, give it out, Dave. Squeeze that shit off the can.